Planning Commission hearing. I will now call this hearing to order at 1:00.
Recording in progress.
Mrs. Barza, can we please have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. We'll start with Chair Wardlow.
Here.
Vice Chair Boss.
Present.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Here.
Commissioner Bauke.
Present.
Commissioner DeLugio.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Wiscombe.
Here.
We have quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. We will begin with preliminary matters, requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or ex-agenda items. Ms. Arseneaga, do we have any?
Chair Wardlow, no, we do not.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements or appeals?
Chair Wardlow, we do have one announcement. It's for emergency coastal development permit was issued for 1921 El Camino de la Luz to install road base to temporarily cover and secure the driveway soil. So that action will require a follow-up formal coastal development permit that your commission will see.
Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
I just wanted to let the commission know that I'm appearing virtually. I want to thank City TV and Ms. Carmen and Ms. Johnson for making that possible. I'm here, so just call out to me if you need me.
Thank you so much. That brings us to item C. Ms. Arseneaga, do we have any review consideration and actions on the following planning commission minutes and resolutions, January 16, 2025 commission minutes?
I have a comment.
Are there any commissioner comments on the minutes?
I have a comment. Just a small comment on the minutes where it says under E on page two, comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on the agenda. Public comment opened at 1:07 as the following individuals spoke. All these individuals spoke in regarding to 1269 for Larra Road. So I'd like to maybe add a comment and just add those words of what they spoke about because all six of them did comment about 1269 for Larra Road. So I'd like to maybe add that to the minutes.
That's fine by me. Is that all right with everyone?
I think it's important to document that in these minutes.
Ms. Arseneaga, is that all right?
Yeah, I think that would be acceptable.
All right. Thank you. Are there any public speakers or comments on the minutes?
So then I'll move the minutes with that addition.
Do I have second?
Okay. Commissioner Barnwell seconded. Ms. Carmen, can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes. Okay. We'll start with Commissioner Bauke.
Abstain.
Commissioner DeLugio.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiscombe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss.
Yes.
And Chair Wardlow.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And that takes us to item D, comments from members of the public pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Due to time constraints, each person is limited to two minutes. Ms. Carmen, do we have anyone in person or remote that would like to give public comment?
At the current time, I do not have any speaker slips, but if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for general public comment, they can fill one out and bring one up to me. I'm not seeing any movement, and I don't currently have any participants online, and we did not receive any written correspondence to acknowledge, so I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Carmen. We will now close general public comment for items not on the agenda. We will move to item three, draft five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2026 to 2030. We have Brian DiAmore, city engineer, with us to provide a staff presentation. Brian, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Chair Wardlow. Commissioners, pleased to present to you today an update on the city's capital improvement program. This is a document that we put together every two years, and it looks ahead five years at our needs for capital improvements citywide. I'm in the Public Works Department. We have a lot of infrastructure within Public Works, but this document covers all city assets, so that includes our enterprises like waterfront and airport, as well as some of the general fund programs like police and fire, library, parks and rec. And of course, within Public Works, we've got streets and water and water resources with a lot of infrastructure needs. So we do have staff who are here in the room today who can answer some of the questions about individual projects. But what I'm going to do is just go through an overview of the overall program at kind of a high level. And then I do have a list of the newly added projects, which is the purpose of today, is to get approval from the Planning Commission to include those projects in the updated document, which I will say it's a draft document. It's still being worked on by staff. But at this point in time, we're pretty set in terms of the adding and taking away of projects. It's at this point, we're more at the what can be funded or not funded stage. I'm going to go ahead and jump in. So this kind of already talks about what I mentioned with the purpose, that we find the projects are consistent with the general plan, those newly added projects. And I will say that we made a conscious effort with this iteration of the CIP to not add more projects than we thought could reasonably begin to have some activity on them within this five-year horizon. There was, what we noticed was each iteration, the document just kind of grew and grew and grew, and we were adding more than we were completing. So the focus this time around was more on realistic delivery. So as a result, I believe we're at 32 new projects, and two years ago, it was about twice that. So it's a much smaller list of projects that will be in front of you today. What is a capital project? Some of you who've been on the commission for a while, you've heard this, I'm going to be pretty brief on it. And I've already mentioned the thing about fixed assets, but typically, it's a project that's $100,000 or more. It's not always the case. It's not a hard and fast rule, but it's usually something of that magnitude, something that's going to last for five years or longer. This is an obvious example here, which is the Las Positas multi-use bike path, which has been in place now for a while. So some of the goals, and again, I've probably already talked about a little bit of this in my intro, and I guess I'll take a moment to mention one thing. Normally, the intro is done by the city public works director. And our director, who presented the last time, it was Cliff Mauer. He recently resigned from that position, and as of today, I'm stepping into that role as the acting public works director. So today's a little bit crazy for me. I was in the EOC this morning. I'm acting public works director, and I'm presenting CIP, which I haven't done before, but I've been working on CIP for all my years in Public Works and feel pretty comfortable with this. But anyway, just a little background on what's going on today. And I guess I'll say, congrats to the commission. You all made it here despite the wet weather, so good job. Not only a quorum, but you're all here. So the goals of the CIP, it's a planning document for capital improvements over that five-year period. We do have a placeholder in the document that has future needs, but we try to be realistic with that because things could be out there 15, 20, even 50 years, and we don't want to just have a whole bunch of projects and all of it's just listed as a future need. But there are some projects that might take five or even 10 years to deliver, and so some of the funding needs are going to be outside of those five years. That's why we have that other column in the database for that future need. It also is an opportunity to identify unmet needs. We've discovered that over the years is the projects that are listed in this document, we're not able to fund everything, but it's good to know and list what the needs are. And then it becomes a plan for the budget. We do a five-year CIP, and that feeds right into the two-year budget cycle. And all of this, of course, is good for going after funding. If we have unmet needs, we can try to find out, well, where can we meet those needs? And oftentimes, there are grant opportunities to be able to do that. There is a prioritization process that takes place with the CIP, and this is something we've often talked about with the commission over the years. And it really isn't a one-size-fits-all where we can throw all of the projects throughout the entire city into some matrix for prioritization and just rank them 1 through 100, or 1 through, in our case, 300 and something, whatever we're at. Because of the different funding sources and restrictions on what can be done with certain funding sources, it's more like each of those sources of funding, the projects that are eligible for those sources have their own ranking. But some of the things we look at, of course, safety, the need to maintain our existing assets is very important. So those can be unfortunately sometimes surprises, that divert funds away from what you had planned to do. The last two winters were not helpful in that regard because we had a lot of city infrastructure needs that were unplanned that we had to address. Of course, there's planning documents out there that help with the prioritization. And then again, like I said, the flexibility, whether we have it or not with funding, plays a role in all of that. And then to get into a little bit of detail on the funding sources, and again, this has been presented in the past to the commission, so I'm not going to spend a ton of time on it. But as we go around this exhibit, sort of from the top, if we call that at 12:00, and go in the clockwise direction, I would say we're going from least restrictive to most restrictive sources of funding. And general fund is generally the least restrictive source of funding that we have. There's a lot of flexibility on where we can apply those funds. However, in general, general fund supports operations of, you know, throughout the city of our general fund operations. There's not a lot of discretionary funding available for things like capital improvements. And then you have enterprise funds, which would be like waterfront, airport, water and wastewater fund. Those are considered enterprise funds, where the funds are coming in from the users, and it needs to stay kind of self-contained for the benefit of those users. Internal services funds, that would be like our fleet services, our IT, where the departments throughout the city are paying into that fund in exchange for services that they receive. And then designated funds, this would be something like Measure A, which is a local sales tax that's county-wide, and it's specific to transportation needs. We have a variety of those types of funds. And then grants is, again, we're going from least to most restrictive. That's specific most often to a project, and it's often competitive, where you have to apply and deliver within certain timelines. And then debt issuance or loans, those are obligations, legal obligations that we have to make payments. So those are kind of the variety of sources that we have to help fund our capital programs. And then we get into a giant table of data. In the past, this has been presented as more of a pie chart that, to me, felt very crowded, but maybe it's because I'm the engineer and I like numbers and I like structure that I decided to put it into the table format. But this gives you what I mentioned earlier, there's 32 new projects this time around. The total number of projects is 296, so that's down a little bit from the last time. And the numbers, like I said, we're still sorting out what we're going to be able to fund and what we won't be able to fund. But the snapshot in time when this report was put together, it was over a half a billion dollars in those first two years. And then I put the next three years into another grouping, and that's almost $600 million. And then the future need is almost a billion. So total in our document is about $2 billion worth of capital needs. And it's divided up.
Excuse me, that's with a B, right?
That is with a B. That is correct. Yeah. And then, so I guess I'll go back to that slide real quick. This is divided up by kind of like the operational program area. So you see that on the left, the different program areas. And then the next slide, it divides it up by the source of funding. So it's a little bit longer of a table because we have a lot of different sources. And even on some of these, they could be drilled down into more detail. And I did notice something when I was in the EOC. The total on this one is incorrect by a little bit. You can see there was $2 billion and 60 million, and then this one is $2 billion and 55. So it's only $5 million difference. The numbers on the, the individual numbers are right. I just was a cut-and-paste error. But anyway, I noticed that, and that bothered me. So if anybody else is doing some accounting up there, I caught that. The number on the first slide is correct, and everything else does match up. Okay. So with that, we'll go into the new projects, and it's really just the list of the projects. In the staff report, you have the individual sheets for each of those projects. But today, in the slides, I'm just going to give a listing of the projects and not really going to get into any detail on those. But again, like I said, we have staff in the room. With the rain, we do have some people who are in the EOC, but if we're not able to answer questions today, we can certainly get answers. And I guess this is our typical slide that we present. Before we jump into the projects, just talks about consistency with general plan, and a couple of the important elements there are the circulation improvements. This would be more for our streets improvement type projects. And then accessibility is another piece. These are from the general plan. And then there's local coastal program policies, which are listed here as well. There are some newly added waterfront projects, which we will see. So yeah, with that, this is the beginning of the list of projects, and it's just in alphabetical order here. Airport has these six that were added, and I think, let me just make sure, yes, this airfield stormwater improvements project, that was added after the staff report was put together. So I just want to make sure that that's called out, that you're aware. If you had gone through that staff report and you're looking at this table here and you're wondering what that's, Airfield Stormwater Improvements Project is, that was added kind of late, but we got it in, and it is in the document, the CIP, right now. And I don't, yeah, I'll just go through this, and then if there are questions, we'll have time for answers. So that was airport. Community Development has a few projects, mostly planning type of documents. General Plan Update, State Street activities with the master plan and some planning services Fire Department, this is more like personal equipment type of things, but that, we are including that in the capital improvement program because they are assets that the city needs to invest in. And outside of Measure C, there really wouldn't be a lot of opportunity to fund these types of things. So it includes radio replacement and self-contained breathing apparatus replacement. Those are both new projects in the CIP. There is a line item that Fire Department previously was using was for equipment, just like more of a generic equipment replacement, but that wasn't enough to fund something like the SCBA replacement, which is something that they are obligated to do. IT, they've got a variety of projects in the plan, and these are three new projects. These, I would say, it's an interesting thing to have IT projects in a capital improvement plan because sometimes it's just software or data. It's things that you don't normally, you don't necessarily see it like you would a building, but those are critical things that we have to have and we need to invest in. So some of those are listed here. Library, a couple of projects listed with the East Side Library Garage. I think that was mentioned in the meeting two years ago. And then we've got library equipment replacement. That's kind of a theme throughout, the equipment replacement, so you just saw that with library. Parks and Rec, they really didn't add any new capital projects by the traditional definition of a capital project, but this one is included now in the CIP. Their equipment replacement, same thing with police. Public Works, this is divided up by program area within Public Works. It's starting with downtown, and there's this Lot 3 pedestrian access and safety improvements. Under operations, there's the fleet operation, and they actually had issues with their, in the auto shop, which services city fleet vehicles. It was flooded last winter, and a number of the lifts are not operable or not easily operable, so there's a need to invest, reinvest in those lifts. And then on the street side, there's the Milpiss 101 Operational Improvements and a Safe Streets for All Action Plan. Under Sustainability and Resilience, there's a number of projects listed here. I'm not going to go down through that list, but we do have staff available if there are any specific questions on those projects. Waterfront, four projects listed here. I will highlight one of them, like I did with that airport project, because it was added after the staff report was printed. You'll see here, there's one, it's called Sterns Wharf Promenade, and that was a recent addition, and it's for the area in the vicinity of the Dolphin Fountain, to do some improvements there, to spruce up that area. Otherwise, the new projects here are fairly straightforward. And that's, yeah, this is the Sterns Wharf project, so it's a small ask for FY '26 to get going on that. So that's it for the list of projects. So again, just to remind you all, the purpose today is to find the projects that are added to the CIP to be consistent with the city's general plan. And with that, whoops, there's not a, not a question slide. But yeah, with that, I'm available as our staff from various departments to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brian DiAmore, especially for jumping in at the last minute on this. So that brings us to comments from members of the public pertaining to this specific item. Ms. Carmen, do we have anyone in person or remote that would like to give public comment?
I do not currently have any speaker slips, but someone may bring one up if they would like to talk. I'm not seeing any movement. We don't currently have anybody online, and we don't have any written correspondence on this item, so I'll give it back to you, Chair Wardlow.
Thank you very much. I will now open it up to my fellow commissioners for questions. Who would like to go first? All right. Commissioner Bauke.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Just got a couple of questions, and I'm trying to understand how this city's process on CIP works, because I've worked with a lot of other cities, and they do it lots of different ways. I'm trying to understand, and maybe you could walk us through the internal process and the engagement of other committees and how we got to the list? And then where's the council lay into this conversation? Is there priorities set by them to start with, and you're working based on their direction? Or are we, as a commission, supposed to be giving you impact as to, input as to priorities? Or like, why are we doing it this way or that way? Maybe something else might, on this list, be more, more, you know, consistent with the general plan, but also something that might be a higher priority? I want to understand that whole concept and what we're doing here today, other than just making a finding that it's consistent with the general plan. Because the general plan has lots and lots of policies, and there's lots of other programs with the general plan, which all lead to a very, very long list. And the question is, are things that aren't even here aspects that are supposed to be implemented in the general plan? So could you walk us through that? Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Bauke. That's a good question. I think there's a variety of questions kind of sprinkled into your comment slash question, and I'll do my best to really, maybe in the beginning, I should have given that overview of what the process is for our CIP. So I'll do that first, and then we can maybe get into a little bit more discussion on prioritization. But I mentioned we do this every two years, but I didn't really get into the detail of what it is that we do as part of this process every couple of years. So it normally kicks off in the fall with internal staff meeting with the folks who are are involved in capital planning and, and operations of the various things that we have. And that's what we call like the CIP kickoff. That's when it, the process begins. And we have a database that houses all of our list of projects. And that's the opportunity when people go in and they can add new projects to that list, update funding. A lot of it's just carryover from the previous, but it's refreshing that list, making sure the needs are still accurate from before and that funding, if the funding needs to be updated, that that takes place. And once that happens, the initial cut at it, which is typically in the fall, then the various program areas will take their list, their draft list of projects to different boards and committees. We were a little bit slower on that this year, so I think there might still be a couple that haven't seen the list. But for the most part, the different, the appropriate boards and committees for the different program areas have seen the list of projects, commented on it to staff. And that's been like the initial iteration of the document. And now we're at Planning Commission to get additional comment. Ultimately, yes, we want the box checked that it's consistent with the general plan. I agree with you, that's a pretty broad, that's kind of an easy target to hit. So it would be helpful to get, I, I think anyway, to get additional comments on the projects. But ultimately, it's, it's the consistency, consistency with the general plan that we're after for today. The next step is we are going to go to Finance Committee. That's going to be more looking at it just from a budgetary perspective, not so much on a individual project basis. And then in March, it would go to the City Council. So if there were any comments from the commission that either could be directed towards staff or perhaps to council, but that's the process in a nutshell of where we're at. And then, once the council sees it, that's in March, we do still have a bit of time before the budget is adopted, which is usually in June. And this time around, we're trying to sort of keep the CIP in draft form until the budget is set and then make some final tweaks to the, to the budget doc, or to the CIP document so that they match up. So prioritization was the other thing you mentioned. And what we did this year, I didn't get into it in the slides, but it is worth mentioning because we've struggled with it over the years as staff to come up with a good methodology of prioritizing projects. And I mentioned it earlier, how it can't really be done on a, on an entirely citywide basis, but within each program area, it makes sense to try to do so where there's specific funding sources available. And in the staff report, I did include, I think I did, yeah, I included the criteria. We, we did establish a methodology to score projects based on a criteria that we had established. And it included things like the source of the funding, the impact on the future city's annual operating budget, and if there's any risk management factors. I'm going to go through the whole list because I just want to be thorough in answering the question. Whether the infrastructure is, is considered critical infrastructure, and that would be more like public safety, life safety type of things, quality of life and wellness, whether there's a federal or state requirement or legal obligation, strategic plan alignment, and that talks about consistency with city's strategic goals and objectives, council or advisory board recommendation, community benefit, and then project readiness was another criteria that was factored in. So we put that into the, to the database and projects were scored according to that criteria that we had set up. It wasn't a sole factor, and I don't think it ever would be, in determining which projects get funding or not, but it is just an extra thing to look at and sort of keep in mind. If, if a project that we're considering funding, it didn't score very well, it can kind of stir up a conversation about, you know, is this where we should be putting our funds if it's, if there are other projects that scored better? We're, we're being careful to say that's the scoring, not the ranking. So the, the scoring through this methodology is just part of the overall prioritization process that we go through.
Thank you for your comments because it, that definitely was helpful.
Okay.
The other question is, you've got lots of different sources of funds and projects. Some projects basically get their money from an enterprise fund, some of them will, it's only the general fund or some of it, it has to be a grant, or at least that's how you're suggesting. I was wondering how you made the determinations or how you make the determinations between things that are general fund and Measure C, I'm full focus on the transportation section, versus, you know, how do you make those decisions on those projects that get that money versus the other transportation projects in which you're left to fight for grants for them? And how do you make the determination which ones are a priority? Because I see one thing that just sort of jumps off the page, a very large portion of the city's general fund allocation on transportation just goes to our maintenance program. And every city has sort of its idea how to do that. I'm not sure what the life cycle you're working off, but I've seen a lot of cities either compress or lengthen that life cycle based upon their budgetary requirements. And I was wondering what our life cycle is and is there a possibility that, that we could lengthen our life cycle? Because I've seen a lot of streets be redone, that honestly, people are walking around going, why did you just redo this street? Because it surely didn't need it. And have some of those other monies in the general fund available for other things, which I see a lot of things get zeros on, on your list. So how, how is that process determined?
Right. Commissioner Bauke, I'll, I'll do my best to try to answer that question. Generally, what you said about general fund or the, the streets fund is really what it is, which is a combination of things that do need to be applied towards streets purposes like Measure A, and there's a utility user tax, there's also state gas tax. Those types of things which come in annually from a variety of sources are dedicated to the streets' operation and it really is focused more on just maintaining the existing asset. But it's not enough to do any major capital projects. Thankfully, we have Measure C in place and that's been a huge, that, that has allowed us to do a lot of capital projects. But it's typically, when Measure C is used for streets type of projects, it'll be for a, a basic maintenance project like an overlay, which, you know, you grind it and you, you re-com, refill with asphalt. Or it will be used as matching funds for a grant. And those grants might be what I'm kind of hearing you say, why are you, why are you doing a project there? It didn't feel like it needed it. And that might be because it's a, a safety project as opposed to a, just like a pure maintenance type of project. So hopefully that.
Yeah. It's more how that money gets allocated. That's really, you know, it goes back to that priority question and that's sort of a council discussion, honestly. I don't, like, I don't know if they want us opining as to where they, where the council would honestly opine as to where they, we should be spending our money. I'll leave it at that because we've got our hands slapped making recommendations like that in the past. So anyway, thank you for your, your comments. Thank you. That concludes my comments, Chair.
Thank you. And that brings us to Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. It's great. I just have a few questions. I want to go back to the prioritization because that's, that's interesting concept that I don't, I think this is the first time you've done this, right? Yeah, yeah, which I thought was, was really great. I wanted to know, it, do, do some criteria receive higher scores than others? In other words, if it's public safety, is it going to get 10 points as opposed to, you know, something else that's, you know, maybe down the list a little bit that gets five points?
Commissioner Wiskom, that, that's correct. We did weight some of the criteria more than others. I don't have the exact breakdown with me here today, but there is an item, I mentioned it when I went down through that list, which was the critical infrastructure piece. So that would be something that would be more of a public safety type of item. I don't remember how much weight that was given, but none of them are, are way, like, are a lot higher than another. It's not equally weighted criteria, but we didn't put like three times the weight on one criteria versus another.
Okay. I assume something like risk management, addressing, addressing safety liability or risk mitigation concerns would be up there too with critical infrastructure. I'm seeing a nod.
Yes. And actually, as we put this together, it was difficult to even try to come up with scoring for the different, like the number of points to give to the different criteria because in, in some situations, that risk management aspect could be a real driver. But it wasn't like we wanted to put all the, the points into that one. So it, it's sort of like on the whole, it, it's a good tool, but again, like I said, we wouldn't rely on it to make, we wouldn't solely rely on it to make decisions for funding.
Okay. Thank you for the answer to that. I, I think it's a great way to do it. And I hope you continue to do that in the future because I think that's, it's a good way to evaluate. And it's, it's good because you, that it's clear that the wish list is, the wish list is there, but what this document has done is shrink up that to more realistic. I think that just makes it more realistic effort, so. Okay. And then I wanted to just move on to the project sheets. I had a couple of questions on those. And the first one is pretty basic. Down in the bottom left, it says include in the HMP. What is the HMP? Why do I not know that acronym?
Hazard mitigation plan.
Oh, okay. That's why, okay. I wouldn't have thought about that one. Okay, great. Okay. And then on page 11, which is hangars one and two. This is one, I, I know the airport is, is, gets significant funding from the FAA. So is this, is this a project where, where we might qualify for FAA funding for hangar one and two? Can you answer that? And if you can't?
Commissioner Wiskom, we do have staff here from airport and I'd like for one of them to come up and be able to answer that question.
I'm Sarah Isa. I'm the Capital Development Manager at the airport. To answer your question, no, hangar one and two, they are not eligible for a federal reimbursement.
Okay. And then while you're up there, Ms. Isa, the next page, which I printed this out incorrectly, but the next page, I was confused on that. So it says, it says, this is integration projects at the airport. So my question is, it says FAA current year budget 80,000, airport 80,000 for FY '25-'26. So is that, is that a matching thing? But then it says total 80,000. So I was confused about, is it FAA money or is it, or is it city money?
Thank you for the question. It's, it's all city money. I, I believe that's incorrect.
Okay. So that should have just been moved. Okay. Okay. And it's 80,000 total then?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And I think you're off the hook. Thank you over there. Then I wanted to go on to page 14. I'm going the wrong way here. So we're into the housing element, seventh cycle. So is the allocation of a million dollars in FY '29-'30, is that for the eighth cycle?
Thank you for the question, Chair Wardlow. Commissioner Wiskom, I'm Tess Harris. I'm the State Street Master Planner and I'll be responding on behalf of Dan Gullett. So the, the housing element, what he wanted to, wanted me to convey to, to all of you was that we wanted to include funding for the housing element, which will come up 2030, 2031, as well as the land use element. It generally, about 20 years from when it was last, last change, last updated in 2011 would be when we would want to update it. Our priority would be to make sure that we have enough staffing to, to complete the housing element appropriately and do that project first and then, and then go on and do the general plan, the land use element specifically.
Okay. So.
So that would cover the general, the land use element piece at this time.
Okay. So that, that is money for the eighth cycle then, the next cycle of the housing element.
Correct.
And then I guess the follow-up question to that is now that objective design and development standards are done, will the implementation of other actions in our current cycle be done in-house so there's no additional funding? Because I don't see anything here for, for the housing elements. Is this all just internal work?
Commissioner Wiskom, I believe that's correct, but I'll need to confirm with other staff.
Okay. I assume it is, but yeah, okay. That's good. Thank you very much for that, Ms. Harris. I appreciate it. And then I wanted to, oh, you should probably stay there because I wanted to go on to page 16, which is the State Street Master Plan. And, and I'm really confused about the funding for this and, and why, the magnitude of the funding for this and where it's going. And so I, so I guess it's a two-part question. What is taking place now in the master planning process? I mean, are we going to end up with an actual document that, that, I mean, I've done master plans before, so, you know, they become documents or, you know, plans for the future. And then what are we getting for these additional funds? Because I know we, we spent, you know, 1.8 million originally with the consultant and are we still using the consultant? Or if you could just kind of go over that, that would be really helpful.
Commissioner Wiskom, sure. So, so this funding, so the State Street Master Plan is funded through Measure C. That includes the contract that we have with the consulting firm. We still have that contract as well as staffing. So it includes the State Street Master Planner position and includes a State Street Project Planner position within the city to work on, on this effort. So all of that is funded through Measure C. What you're seeing in the funding source here accounts for all of that. So it's accounting for really internal staff as well as the consulting cost. That's why that number is higher.
Okay. That, that.
I hope that answers it a little bit. And so I wanted to highlight, just since we're talking about the master plan, so really the goal is to get that project completed, is to get a document out to the public in the next few months and get it to council for hopefully adoption by the end of this year. And we are working towards that, I do believe, we'll make that target. And then in, in this packet, the prior, the prior page, page 15, talks about State Street Design Services. That would be. That would be following on to the master plans when we look at specific projects. We wanted to ensure that funding could be available so we could actually implement the master plan.
Okay. So the 500,000 in, in these three fiscal years are really placeholders for implementation? Is that correct?
Commissioner Wiskom, that's correct. So we would, it, the idea is that we would use that funding to get into construction level drawings as we take certain phases of the master plan forward.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Harris. I appreciate it. And then I, I wanted to, my last question is about, well, I think it's my last question, is about the East Side Library Garage on page 22. I'm, I'm really confused about current budget, it's Measure C funding, but it's a million dollars. And, and are we, is it, what is the million dollars for? That's what, it, it says to identify a location for the garage and, and a proposal. What, what are we using? Are we actually constructing something or buying something?
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. Christina Hernandez, Library Services Manager. So this project is for the construction of a garage at the East Side Library location. Currently, we have one library-on-the-go outreach vehicle, a rather large vehicle, and we have a second vehicle in production right now that's coming to provide even more outreach. We go out to parks and community centers and schools and things like that. And so this construction project is to actually house both of those vehicles, to protect them, and to actually house all of the supplies and materials that go in them, so like shelving carts and books and technology that we take out to these outreach visits for, also for more efficient loading and unloading of these vehicles. Currently, staff are transporting carts across a parking lot from the East Side Library. So this would allow that to happen, to do that work onsite in that, in that new building. And so currently, this project is under design, and so that was what the funding for, is for this year and in fiscal year 2026, and then construction in 2027 for that vehicle.
So we don't have a budget for construction yet? We're just under design?
Currently, we're under design right now. It is a million dollars for construction, but that's under discussion. As Mr. Demore mentioned earlier, we're still finalizing the actual funding, so that million dollars may be split up over multiple years.
And it, was there any consideration to looking at one of our existing parking garages for the location of these vehicles? It's, it seems like, you know, downtown parking is, you know, their revenues have gone down, they've got a lot of empty space. Can you comment on the efficiency of possibly doing that instead of?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Commissioner Wiskom. Yes, we actually did look at quite a few locations to house these vehicles. They don't actually fit in our parking structures. They're too tall, because the buildings are meant for, I'm sorry, the vans are meant for people to actually be able to go on and off, and they have lifts, and so they're actually too, too tall to fit into the parking garages. And in the lots, we actually needed a convenient location to load and unload, because we swap out all materials based on the actual outreach visit that we're doing, and they're out every single day of the week. So we actually needed them to be onsite at the library.
Okay. So the materials are different depending upon where you're going?
Correct.
For the day?
Correct.
Okay. That answers those questions. Thank you for that. And that's the end of my questions, madam chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. Next, Vice Chair Boss.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Wiskom asked most of the questions that I was going to ask about the general plan housing element update, and I, I wanted to better understand. So my understanding is on page 14 of 41, that the million, that's for the drafting of the, the future housing element update. But my question was more about the current housing element update implementation. I looked back at our, the similar report from early 2023, and I didn't see anything allocated for the housing element update that was just completed and that implementation is in progress. So I was just curious why, why it wasn't included currently, but it was included for the, the next housing element update. So I, I think you have to go back and, and come back with an answer later, but just curious. That was it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Boss. Next, Commissioner DeLucio.
Thank you. I think we're fixated on the page with the 14, the general plan update. I do have a question. It says that the general plan annual progress report submitted to City Council and HCD by April 1st. Will we be seeing that report? Would that be coming before the planning commission? And how often is it prepared on an annual basis?
Chair Commissioner, yes, I believe you will be seeing that report at the commission level. And yes, it is prepared annually.
Okay. So, yeah, because that's, I think we've seen it in the past, it's come before, so that's a real critical document. A lot of the questions have already been answered that I would have. I have some comments that I would want to make at some point. I just want some clarification, maybe on the State Street Master Plan? Because I, there's two, I know we have two pages, oh, that's like the, like, top-of-mind item right now going on. We have, there's two pages. One is State Street Design Services, and that starts in 27 and 28 fiscal years. And I imagine going forward, that's to, after the master plan is adopted, is that to start coming up with designs to execute the new State Street?
Commissioner, yes, that's correct. The State Street Design Services would be for really construction level work, so construction level drawings, taking specific projects through the process. Separately, we have, for implementation, there's another capital improvement project that, that you don't see, because it's been ongoing, where, where we have funding in the long-term future for the actual construction of, of realizing the State Street Master Plan.
Is the intent to take that out of Measure C also? Would you just, what we're not seeing, or we haven't decided where that funding is coming from?
For the State Street Design Services? At the moment, it would be for Measure C for the future implementation, funding for that has not been identified yet.
And then one other question. We, now going back to the State Street Master Plan for the fiscal year 25, 26, 26, 27, this $500,000 a year, is that to, is that for, is that for fixes to State Street up and, before we actually come up with a new State Street?
Commissioner, so the funding under State Street Master Plan for paid, on page 16, is really for the work effort to finalize the master plan document itself. So it includes staff salaries, it includes administrative costs at the city related to it, and then it also includes consulting costs.
Okay. So we're going through fiscal year 27 almost with coming up with master plan, adopting a master plan, and before we start, I guess, designing it after that?
Yes, and so we kind of, we went back and forth internally with whether we should combine the State Street Master Plan item and the State Street Design Services item into one, because I do anticipate that each year there will be costs as we're going from the master plan to design services. This was just sort of, you know, dividing them up as two separate, because we wanted to differentiate the, the type of project, but I, but I think we could, we could go either way. It was somewhat of a toss-up. So it could be that, you know, in, in, by fiscal year 26, 27, we've completed the master plan and are into the design service stage, and then that $500,000 would shift over to the design services piece.
Thank you. I'm glad it's moving along. I do have a question. Thank you very much for this report we got today. I thought it was really, really good and thorough, and I really appreciate everybody's dedication to all this. I do have a question. There, you just mentioned there's like 296 projects, I believe, which we're seeing probably 31 today. I think we have 30, and we got another one in the packet. If I wanted to see the other 265, I did, you did some highlights, I know, of how it all adds up to over $2 billion or something. Was that the number? And if I wanted to see the individual projects that I'm not seeing here, where would I, where would, is that available to the public?
Commissioner DeLucio, that's a good question. It's still, it's a draft document as a whole right now. The existing CIP is available online, so that would include all of the older projects. And then we've presented to the commission today the newer projects. What you would have to sort of piece together is which ones have fallen off to get to the 296.
Not my intent to do that. I just wanted to get more exposure to what the other projects are, because I think this is, maybe this came before, it's been once before, it's my third year, I just started in the commission, but I'd like to just see those, get a preview of those other projects. So they are available on, if, on the website?
Yes, from the, the document that was.
Okay.
The, the previous version of the document, so that was adopted two years ago. So it's not the updated list, but you'll see, most of the 296 will be listed there.
Okay. Terrific. And another question is, I thank you for the funding sources. That's real key here, to know where the funding has come from. And thank you for giving us a little one-on-one of the different sources where the funding would come from. Now, if I was, our job here is to find consistency to the general plan. I mean, we're asking questions about some details on the budgets and all that, and that's fine. One thing that would be helpful to me would be, for the 31 we're looking at today, is if this, I know the page was extended a little bit, and you would tell me what element of the general plan we're talking about, and just the policy number that we're talking about in the general plan. Because that's, if we're going to find consistency with the general plan, I'd want to see what element of the general plan we're talking about and what policy we're talking about. I'm not talking about a thesis here, I'm just talking about a simple, here it is, this is the portion of the general, housing in the, in the, in the general plan, for example, and, and it's just a general point, it may be the whole document, I don't know, just something that I can foot back to and say, yes, this is consistent with the general plan. Now, everything you've done today and I've seen here, obviously, I'm going to, I'm going to go along with it, I'm, I think it's consistent with the general plan, but I think that would be helpful also. I've actually, was on a planning commission in another city, and that's the way that actually was presented to us, because that was our role. Our role was to find consistency with the general plan, so they would point out the different elements and the, and the policies that we were talking about within the general plan. So, thank you for that.
Yes, and if I can, I'll just say, Commissioner DeLucio, that's a great suggestion. I think we can do that, especially when we have a smaller list like we did this year. It's a little bit more manageable to do that, but I think we could add a column to a table that says that. And some of that information is actually readily available, because within the database and on some of these sheets that have been printed out, we do have a section, it's called specific plans or policies related to the project. Now, there's more detail on some projects than there is in others. Some of them may list like an exact policy with the, you know, the numbers and the letters and everything right down to that level. But I've, I've heard the suggestion, and we'll see if we can bring that back for next time.
And I just have one more comment, and I'll stop, and I don't have anything left after that. I want to thank you for all the EV charger installations that are going on, and that's terrific, and all the grants that you're getting for that. And, and I'm really impressed that of the $2 billion, we're talking about 655 million of it is in grants. And that's really impressive. That's what's like more than 25, 30% of that $2 billion. So I just wanted to call that out. So those are my comments and my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll go to Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with everyone's comments about the thoroughness of the report. Thank you. Couple of general, and I, the library, I want to go back to the library one. The million dollars that's allocated, I'm just curious, is that the projected cost of the garage? What is the, and now we just putting some fudge factor in there, so we have a little extra money left over, because no two-car garage in the history of the world has ever cost a million dollars.
Commissioner Barnwell, I want to give kind of a lay of the land of where we're at with funding with Measure C right now, and then Christina Hernandez, who's here from library, she can give you a little bit more detail on this particular project. But right now, staff are still meeting to look at the overall list of projects that are vying for funding from Measure C, and there's a lot more on that list than we have funding for. So what's in the draft CIP right now, it's going to get revised. The projects that are in the CIP will remain, but whether or not they're funded in these two years or get pushed out into the next couple of years, that's still an ongoing process with staff, and then ultimately, that'll get presented to the council. But I just wanted to give that overall picture. So even though you're seeing some projects with proposed funding, it's not a certainty that they will get funded, it's just the reality of the budget situation that we have right now. I mean, it's, it's great that we have a lot of projects that we want to deliver, but there's always a limitation that's on the funding side.
Well, if I may add to my question, that, that brings up the word scrutiny for us as planning commissioners. To what degree, I mean, we can't bring close scrutiny to these things, clearly, but to what degree has close scrutiny been brought to this, for example, million-dollar number for the garage? How, how, how do we know? I mean, these numbers are being thrown out, and we're going to say yes. But I'm not, I'm unclear, the precision that's gone into the numbers that we're now saying yes to. Is that an inappropriate question? I don't, you have a blank look on your face.
Well, I mean, the, Commissioner Barnwell, the, the purpose, again, is whether it's consistent with the general plan, but I do understand, like, if you're saying yes to it's consistent with the general plan, there's this hesitation of, well, I don't know if I'm, you know, is that yes, saying we support funding every single project on that list? And it's a little bit of a different action or question.
Okay. That's, that, in other words, we're, we're using round numbers every step of the way here. Ask a question, I want to, I'm curious about the EV stations. Do we make money on those?
Well, first, do you want to hear a little bit more about the East Side Library?
Oh, yes, I do. I'd love to hear about the two-car garage.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. Yes, the, the garage is actually a little bit beyond just a two-car garage. It has to be fairly large. We are housing two very large outreach vehicles, and there has to be some charging associated with those vehicles. It's also a space, we're going to be housing technology that we take out, so charging for that technology as well is also many carts and the books and other materials that we load and unload. So it's more than a place to just park. Also, the plan is to have an attached workspace, if you will. So it's, it is a garage, but with an attached workspace, so our staff can actually work out of that. Our outreach program has grown exponentially, and so we have so many materials that for efficiency purposes, they need an attached workspace to be able to turn over that material as they prepare these outreach vehicles to go out every day to a different location. So it is a garage that houses our vehicles, but the space is going to be used so much more than just to house those two, two vehicles.
That makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Thank you for, the word garage was the thing that was misleading in the report.
Correct.
You could add another, you know, subordinate clause to that sentence and explain what you just did, and it makes it sound good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And my next question is on the, the EV power stations. Do we make money on those? And if so, why wouldn't we want to do a bunch of them? Or is the initial capital cost so great that we don't really show any profit until way into the future?
Perfect. Commissioner Barnwell, through the chair, my name is Jefferson Lyttin, Energy and Climate Division Manager and Sustainability and Resilience. With regards to your question, the three chargers on the capital improvement plan are installed by a third party, by which, with whom we have a contract. So they are paying all the upfront capital costs for those installations. They pay us a small licensing fee to use that property, and then they recoup their, their costs through the, the charging costs that they charge to the customers.
Oh. So it's not really a profit thing for us?
It's not necessarily a profit thing for us, but it is a huge convenience to our residents.
Yeah.
These are all going to be DC fast chargers that are going in, so you can basically, you know, spend 30 minutes and get back on the road, spend 15 minutes and get back on the road.
Well, I wasn't necessarily, I was just curious about, you know, we're always curious about income in the city. How do we make more money? And I was wondering if this was a source, because we, we keep adding these stations, and I like the fact that we do, and they meet the public demand. I just wondered if there was an income stream, but not what you would imagine.
Yeah. The income stream, there is the income stream through the licensing, and our intention with that income stream is to basically roll that over into future installations. So that's helping fund the expansion of our EV charging program.
Thank you. And I guess my last question is? And I guess my last question is, to what degree on all these projects do we put in a public outreach? I'm thinking specifically, I think it's called Lot 3, Lot 3, Lot 4, down by the Riviera Bar, behind the old, when, there were some changes made to that, and these changes, well, Delevina, for example, you guys put, you're going to put in the street signals, I believe, all along Delevina Street now, something like that. And there's, the public outreach included these signs at every block that told you what was going to happen. And I know downtown, a lot of people read those signs, so I'm wondering, is that also part of what you intend to do? Or are we just going to start digging away and have people wonder what we're up to?
Commissioner Barnwell, our public outreach process on all of our capital projects is very robust, and it utilizes a variety of tools, because we've found that some people don't look at their mail, whether it's physical mail or email or phone calls, or they don't listen to the radio, or, you know, there's a variety of ways to reach out to people. And we try to use as many of those tools as possible, and one of the most effective is that simple one that you mentioned, is the signs that go out. Because if you're a frequent user of that area, you'll see that sign, and you'll have an opportunity to read about the project and know what's coming in advance. Sometimes we'll put those out in advance of a public workshop, so that people are aware that, it's not that we're about to do construction, but we're actually planning a project, and we want to receive input from the community. So those message boards that we put out are used for a variety of purposes at different stages during a project.
Thank you. I only say that because of all the stuff we're discussing right now, which is projects, nobody in the wide world knows what we're doing here. And the only way they'll ever know is when the shovel goes in the ground, wherever that is. And I think it's very positive for the city to explain what we're doing, so people can see where, how their money's being spent. I'm glad to hear that you're doing that, and thanks for answering the questions. I appreciate your time. Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we'll have Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Demore, for your presentation and for your service to the city. Congratulations on your new role. Look forward to working together. I'm thinking about how we've been asked to assess this in light of consistency with the general plan. And when I think about the general plan, I am thinking about the housing element and the RENA allocation and need for 4,000 low and very low-income units by 2031. And so I guess I'm kind of asking like a broader question here. As we think about capital improvements for fixed assets and infrastructure, has staff given any thought to how we conceptualize publicly-owned affordable housing as a category, as a need, a public infrastructure need in this city? I mean, I'm asking for something that's not traditional, I know, but I think it's relevant.
Commissioner Peterson, that's a really good question, and I don't have, I won't have a complete answer for you today, because a lot of that is beyond the scope of what I do within Public Works. But I will tell you that there are conversations that are taking place at different levels within the organization about that, and we know it's a priority, the, one of our key funding sources for capital is Measure C, and there's a Citizens Oversight Committee for that. And they usually do, every five years, they do a, they make a recommendation that goes to council for prioritization of things for that five-year period. And the most recent recommendation of priorities, it did include housing as a priority. It wasn't at the top of the list, but it was on the list. So that's, that's one thing. And then there's another new funding source that's coming online, and there's been conversations at the council level, and the community's provided a lot of input, is on Measure I. So I don't know what will happen with that. But there aren't a lot of discretionary sources for the city, but where I'm saying, like, there are some conversations that are taking place, there are some potential opportunities where maybe, it could be a long shot, but, you know, there's an opportunity with maybe an enterprise who's interested in looking at affordable housing for employees. So it's kind of way out there, out of my lane of Public Works. But I wanted to share that, you know, those are topics that are in conversation. And then lastly, we have a property that we will relatively soon be vacating, which is the existing police station. So that's another, again, it's an opportunity. I don't know what's going to come of that. So that's kind of a sprinkling of things to help answer your question. But I think really that's like city council policy and more so than CIP. But it takes something within the CIP to make those policies come to life.
So I understand this is top-down, but is there any bottom-up sense where like the department's kind of says, hey, we have this extra parcel, this parking lot, we're vacating a building? Has there been any thought about that? Or is this all more like from higher up to top-down?
Yeah, Commissioner Peterson, I think right now it would be more of a top-down to get those priorities sort of established.
Okay, thank you. I, others have asked the questions that I was going to ask, and I agree with what's been said. So those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. And Commissioner Wiskom would like to make another question.
Sorry, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow through on the Measure C money. I was on that oversight committee for the first, the inception of it for four years. But I think with the police station, that's, that's really where the competition for these funds are, is going to come from. Is that correct, Mr. Demore?
Commissioner Wiskom, yes. The, the police station project, which we've awarded a construction contract for that, and if you've been by the Coda commuter lot recently, you'll see that it looks different. The trees are gone, so work is underway there. That work is largely being funded through debt issuance, but not entirely. So there are, there is a portion of the project that will have to be cash-funded, and that's going to put a pretty big squeeze on Measure C for the next two to three years. Beyond that, the annual debt payment for the project is not a, it's not a huge slice of that Measure C pie. So we will, after we get through these next few years, things will open up. And then, of course, with each subsequent year, like a mortgage, as the growth of Measure C, if it continues to grow as a sales tax, our annual payments stay the same. It's just these few years that we're in a real pinch, and it's going to be tough to fund a whole lot of our CIP.
So the debt services is going to come out of Measure C also when we get to that stage?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. I think, I think it's important to know that, I mean, that's been, that was a big priority when Measure C was on the ballot, was, was a new police station. So I know that's been a top priority, at least when I was on that committee. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. I greatly appreciated the presentation. I do not have any other questions. I think the commission did a very thorough job. We can move on to comments from commissioners. Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a lot of comments. I appreciated the realistic delivery. You know, I've seen this over, several times over the last eight years. So there's no scope creep, as I call it, in this one, which I think is, is good. And I was very happy not to see the A-word, "ocella" in here somewhere. I don't know if it's buried in there, but at least the, the word isn't there. And I just, I have a comment about the boards and commissions. We normally, my recollection is, we normally get a letter from, you know, the Harvard Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, or we get comments, we get minutes with comments on it. I think that's helpful for us to review that, so I would, and I know the schedule's a little different this year, and I can understand that, that's, that's fine. But I think in the future, two years from now, it would be really helpful to, to have that boards and commission feedback when, when the document comes to us. And because there may be some comments about the, I know we're, we're, we're here to, to look for conformance with the general plan, but there may be some comments that relate to that that may be helpful for us. So thank you very much to all of you who came and, and answered our questions today. I'm very appreciative of that, and it's always nice to see all of you, actually. So, and congratulations to you, Mr. Demore.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kudos all the way around. And I want to, I want to thank Mr. Peterson for his comment about the RENA numbers and the housing. I personally feel as though one of the major charges of us here on the planning commission is to help get more housing for Santa Barbara, in whatever way we can. And much of the legislation that we enforce is devoted to that. And I've been wondering this thought, and because of Mr. Peterson's comments, I want to ask, he mentioned the bottom-up idea, and this, this discussion throughout your document of planning, where, you know, we're going to do this next year and this the next year. Have we ever looked at the city's real estate and how efficiently it is being used? To, to use a phrase from the, the real estate world, the highest and best use. And these lifts that are being mentioned in the transportation department, the need for more lifts, which I'm hoping are surface-mounted and not hydraulic-buried lifts. But have we ever given a thought to the excess land that may exist on that, in that particular block? That would be then a, a planning process that we would be going through to think about other things that could be done with the land. I don't see that here, but my own observations as a former general contractor and a, and a land use guy, it seems like we have several plots of ground where we've, you know, we've just got stuff kind of all over the place. And if we were a little more diligent in how we organize it on the ground, there would be excess land that we could put up, you know, 40 or 50 units on. And, and the primary one that I think of is that particular area where the, where the city vehicles are being repaired. So in the, in Mr. Peterson's concept of from the bottom up, I would just like to plant the seed that at some point in the future, while you're asking for the lifts, you might be looking around going, are we even, you know, efficiently, efficiently using the land upon which we've set the lifts and where we do our auto work? And how can we think toward the future? Because it seems to me, from everything I hear and everything we do up here, that's one of our biggest charges. And I don't know that the city's actually done as much as they could, so whatever they can do, I would certainly support. And I have no other comments, except thank you very much, and I'm certainly in favor of sending this on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. Commissioner Bauke.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to staff for bringing this to us, because this is quite an effort, and it, it's all, it's going to be an effort for years and years and years. And, and the funding world continues to change, both at the federal and state level, which makes your job even harder. So I think it's easy for us to come to the conclusion, at least for me, that it's consistent with the general plan. But I think there is a couple of things that my fellow commissioners mentioned, which I definitely agree with. We, we need to definitely, we'll correlate these things, line item to policies. When we get into discussions as to funding, we should really look at where the funding sources are and see how we can make the most out of the funding sources we have. I personally would find, and I would make the suggestion, that the council seriously look at the, the maintenance payment annual allocation as a, a place in which there probably could be stretched a little bit to provide funds for some of the other non-funded items or at least matches to grants, so that other items that are priorities, and for example, there's a whole bunch of stuff in the, the Plan Zero, the corridors plans that are all, most of them are unfunded at all. And, you know, there's even, you know, priorities within that, and, you know, none of those are even on this list to being funded. So I really think that's an area we should, we should, the council should look at, at least coming up with which one of those they would want to get going. I would suggest the Upper State Street one, because we've got the whole Los Pacitas project, the mall, and, you know, Lacombra Plaza, there's already a whole lot of stuff changing there. So that would be the time to do that, and that should probably get a, at least get some idea of being funded in this next couple-year cycle. So with that, those are my comments, and thank you for your efforts on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauke. Any other comments from fellow commissioners? All right. Well, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I appreciate the presentation. I too am supportive of this. So can we get a motion?
May I make a motion? Okay, I'll make a motion that the planning commission finds the projects added to the draft five-year capital improvement plan program for fiscal years '26 to '23, consistent with the general plan.
I'll second it.
Ms. Carmen, can we please have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I will take a vote now. Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiskom?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauke?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss?
Yes.
And Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again to everyone for coming today on this important topic. That brings us to item four on our agenda, Two South Quarantina Street, regarding the construction of a new two-story, 18,575-square-foot corporate office for Marburg. This project will require a coastal development permit and a development plan to allow for the construction. We have Ms. Pilar Plummer, Associate Planner, with us to provide a present staff presentation, We will take a two-minute recess as staff comes into the room. Thank you. Thank you. All right. We will reconvene our Planning Commission hearing, and we will start with Ms. Pilar Plummer giving us a presentation from staff. The floor is yours.
Thank you. If you could switch the screen, thanks. Thank you. Again, I'm Pilar Plummer, Associate Planner with the City of Santa Barbara Planning and Zoning Division, and I'll give the staff presentation for this project. The project site is located at Two South Quarantina Street and involves construction of a two-story corporate office building at 18,575 square feet. The project also includes 102 parking spaces, 12 bicycle parking spaces, and hardscape and landscape improvements throughout the site. On the right is a rendering of the project at the corner of Quarantina and Quinientos Street. The required applications that are in front of the Planning Commission this afternoon is discretionary review of a coastal development permit, as the project site is located in the non-appellable jurisdiction of the coastal zone, and a development plan to allow for the construction of 18,575 square feet of net new non-residential floor area. This is an aerial view of the project site outlined in yellow. This is Quarantina Street here, Quinientos, South Caia Cesar Chavez. This is views from the project site. All of the structures that are shown currently on the parcel are going to be removed as part of the project, but this is the general area. As some background, there was a prior project that was presented to the staff hearing officer and later under appeal to the Planning Commission for a light industrial building at the project site in 2021. That building was 3,151 square feet, and also included in that project was some staging and storage area for Marbog Equipment and Vehicles, a trash enclosure, and six vehicle parking spaces. So, as I mentioned, and it was included in the staff report, that particular project was appealed to the Planning Commission and later to the City Council and was ultimately upheld. Following that, in March of 2023, the applicant submitted for a pre-application review of the current project for an office building for Marbog has a different use for the site. At the time, staff noted that the project would require a development plan for the non-residential floor area, as well as some other issues, as well as to get that non-residential floor either through community benefit designation or through transfer existing development rights. And then in April of 2024, the applicant filed for the current project. So, this project that's in front of you will be superseding that project. This project was presented to the Architectural Board of Review in June of 2024. In general, the board was supportive of the project. They did wave story polls for it, overall seeing that the building was consistent with the project compatibility analysis criteria. That is one of their findings that they have to make when it goes back for project design approval. So, in general, they were supportive of the architecture, site planning, materials, and design. They did have some comments to the applicant regarding planting materials for the perimeter fencing, but in general, they felt that the size, bulk, and scale of the building was In terms of zoning ordinance consistency, this is again included in the staff report, but the project is consistent with required building height limitations. There are no setbacks required. They're offering a little bit of a setback, approximately five feet for the building along the two frontages. And then for the interior setbacks, it's around five feet, six inches. The building height is well under what is allowed for the zone at 28 feet, three inches. Vehicle parking, their requirement is 67 spaces. They're providing 102 for the site. And then for bicycle parking, they're providing an additional two spaces above what's required. So, as I mentioned, a development plan is one of the discretionary applications that's being submitted. So, on October 15th, 2024, City Council did review the request for designation as a community benefit project, and they allocated 12,142 square feet of non-residential floor area for the project. Part of the justification behind that is that Marbog is a locally-owned company that provides a broad public benefit and solid waste management for the city and is a locally-based provider for that service. The project enhances the standard of living for city and south coast residents by improving staff efficiency and allowing for streamlined solid waste response to satisfy community needs, and it has the potential to enhance the revenue base for the city and supports a local business. Included with the development plan, so there's the 12,142 square feet from City Council that was granted under the community benefit category. The site also has 3,433 square feet of demolition credit, and they can also use 2,000 and 1,000 from small and minor, which gets them to the requested 18,575 square feet. On the screen, these are the findings that are required for the development plan. In staff's review, the project is consistent with the city's traffic management strategy as implemented by the municipal code, because the site is in the downtown development area, which allows allocations by City Council. It is also not anticipated that the project would have significant adverse effects on the neighborhood aesthetics or character or impacts due to traffic. Again, they are providing more than the required vehicle parking for the project. It'll also enhance the aesthetic appearance of the existing onsite development and neighborhood, given the overall redevelopment of the site and feedback from the Architectural Board of Review. In terms of coastal consistency, as I mentioned, we're in the non-appellable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. It is in the industrial component of the land use plan. So, that's an image on the right to reflect that. You can see Quarantina here in Quinientos, so the subject site is here. The area between Caia Cesar Chavez and Milpas Street, north of the railroad tracks, is designated industrial and allows for various uses, including general commercial, industrial, and office. And portions of this area have the potential for expansion of non-residential square footage, particularly between Caia Cesar Chavez and Milpas Street. Other policies that are of a particular note for the project is policy 3.1-29 for off-street parking. Like I said, they're going to be providing more than the required vehicle parking, which is benefit to the site, and a little bit more bike parking. There's policies related to designer view, compatible development, mitigating impacts to visual resources, landscaping and tree protection. All of these have been preliminary considered by the Architectural Board of Review and received generally good feedback, as included in the minutes from that meeting. As I mentioned, the building is well below the allowed height, so it mitigates impacts to any visual resources. They do have a landscape plan that was included in the project. And they are removing some trees, which I'll show in a minute, and then replacing with more than is being removed. So, this just shows an elevation of the building. This is the south elevation. I do want to note that the particular project will comply with design requirements for floodplain management, and the building's finished floor will comply with the required design flood elevation that's needed for the site. This is the landscape plan, so you can see that there's a number of new trees that are going to be incorporated into the project. Overall, it includes removal of an existing blue gum and rusty leaf fig tree along Quarantina Street and two Chinese flame trees along Quinientos Street. And then they're going to be replacing with, I believe, nine trees over here. And a lot of these trees were similar to the prior project in terms of new street trees, and that's been reviewed by the city arborist in terms of compliance. In terms of environmental review, the project qualifies for an exemption under infill development because the project is on a 1.26-acre parcel surrounded by urban uses. It's consistent with the land use designation, applicable policies. The site doesn't have value as habitat. There's no significant sequef fact related to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality, and it can be served by required utilities and public services. And staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the coastal development permit and development plan, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report, and confirm the environmental analyst's determination of exemption. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and Mr. Cornell is here to give the applicant presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plummer. We will now hear from the applicant, Mr. Cornell. Please state your full name and relationship to the project for the record, and you will have 15 minutes to present. Ms. Carmen, would you please start the timer?
Okay. Thank you. Brian Cornell, architect. With me here today is Derek Carlson with Marbog. If you have any questions for them, John Keikendall, our planner, and Ricardo Castellanos is our landscape architect. I think Pilar has covered this pretty well. It is important to note that, you know, the Marbog Recycling Center is, is right here and other properties of theirs. So, this is, they obviously own some of these properties, and this is an important consolidation of all of their administrative functions into one place, and it's going to make a big difference for them operationally. Just the photos of the site from both Quinientos and Quarantina. You all, most of you saw it at our site visit on Tuesday. The basic site plan, as Pilar has shown you. We tried to make this facility so that it would relieve a lot of the parking problems that are in this neighborhood, so that's why it is overparked. There will be public that will be using the building for paying bills and making arrangements, that sort of thing. What we, when we first talked to Marbog about this, their real thrust was that they wanted, this is the landscape plan, and again, Ricardo is here if you want to talk about it. The floor plan is basically very simple, two-story. Marbog wanted this building to be as sustainable as possible, so the thing that we recommended was a mass timber building, along with trying to cover the roof with as many solar panels as we could. We've actually, you can see here, oriented those panels due south. So, we think that it's actually going to create an interesting relationship when you see those panels. The ABR was a little concerned about seeing those panels, particularly since the roof of this building is, you know, almost at the elevation of the freeway. But in the end, I think they realized that they're aiming away from the freeway and, and really will not create any kind of a, of a visual impact. Couple of cross-sections through the building. We've kept it as reasonably low as possible, and of course, the mass timber really facilitates that. I have the photo here of a, of a typical mass timber building, so you can kind of get a sense. The panels for the ceiling there are called CLT, and this is the same kind of a system that we're using at the police station, so it creates this incredibly beautiful ceiling in the space and also facilitates a lot of natural light and ventilation. So, this is the view from the corner, looking at the building. This is the view head-on on Quinientos, and this is looking at the adjacent property to the, or the property to the west of, of the building along Quarantina. This is the entrance, the public entrance, and where the bike parking will be. And then this is looking from the parking lot, and really, this is an important view because what we're creating is this large expanse of glass recessed into the building in order to facilitate a little outdoor seating area for the employees that will also then connect to the inside sort of cafeteria space. So, that's what that little space is going to be, confident that it's going to be used a lot by the employees. And then this is just kind of a feeling for what the interior of the building is going to look like. We're really excited. Preliminary indications are that our solar panels will create a net zero building. Marbog is interested in a lot of, of vehicle charging, because they have a lot of employees who have electric cars. That will, that will take additional demand on that. We may do those as solar carports. That's to be determined in the future, but very excited. And I think that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cornell. That was a very helpful presentation. We will now move to Commissioner, oh, no, we will now move to public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make comments? Ms. Carmen?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I don't currently have any speaker slips. We do not have any attendance online, and we did not receive any written correspondence on this item, so I will give it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will now open it up to my fellow commissioners for any questions. Vice Chair Boss.
Thank you, Chair. I really appreciate the sustainability goals and, and the parking. I had a question that I think might be for staff around parking. So, I understand vehicle parking, 67 spaces were required, and one bicycle parking space is required for every vehicle space. So, I just, I think the math is 67 vehicle spaces divided by seven, so you get nine and a half or 10 bike spaces. I did the same math for the, the bike parking, and I think if you were requiring seven, sorry, one bike parking space for every seven vehicle parking spaces, then you would need 15 bike parking spaces. But it's, it's more than is required. So, does the, the math or the requirement not apply if you go beyond what's required?
Thank you. So, just to be clear with your question, the, you're saying that the requirement, ten, one space per seven vehicle spaces, that's correct?
Yes.
And then, I'm sorry, can you just address your question one more time? I just want to make sure.
Yes. So, if you're looking at 102 vehicle spaces?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's based on the 67 spaces required.
Okay. That was my question. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Any questions from any other commissioners? Any questions from any other commissioners? Commissioner Bauckey?
A couple of questions for staff. I was looking at the coastal policies that are at the very end of the staff report. Could you address how Policy 4.35 regarding underground utilities is being met with this project, because I see no reference to a condition that implements that policy in our conditions?
And Commissioner, you are referring to in the listed policies at the end of the staff report?
Page 44.
Yeah, let me get to that, so I can see the exact language. Bear with me a moment. And if you can repeat which policy, was it again?
4.35 underground utilities.
I think it's 4.3-25.
Yes, yes.
Oh, 25, okay.
Sorry, my mistake. I transcribed.
Thank you for the question. I don't believe that there's any above-ground, is that correct, Mr. Cornell, that is installed for the project, above-ground utilities?
No, I mean, there are, there are power lines that are along both streets.
Yes.
But those will remain. But anything that is feeding our building will go underground.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my question is, you know, because like, some projects, when it's a new one, especially of this size, the city requires undergrounding, and I wasn't sure why this is not being, undergrounding's not being required here. I mean, you look at your slide number five in your presentation, and you've got these big power lines on both sides, and I wasn't sure what the city's threshold and cutoff, because I know residential projects, I, had this happen to me, I just, I just wanted to do an expansion of my house and ended up having to underground all the utilities in front of it. So I'm trying to understand why, how we're implementing this policy and why there isn't a condition on undergrounding on this, or it doesn't meet the threshold, or why we're not seeing that on this project, based on that policy.
Yeah. Thank you for the question. I think, you know, in terms of if there's a particular condition that you wanted to include with respect to that, we can pursue that. You know, I defer to public work staff, but they're not present. So if there's a condition that you would like to include in conditions of approval with respect to that, we can do that. As far as improvements to the overall project, as Mr. Cornell said, there are some light poles, but in terms of any other utilities, there, you know, I would imagine they'd have to fall under the same underground requirements that we would have for any other project.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to understand is, you know, what's the threshold, and what's the trigger, and, you know, the city has a policy on undergrounding. I'm not sure exactly what that, how that's implemented, and I mean, this is a new project. It's on a small, this is the kind, this is the kind of one in which you would normally probably trigger it if there is a policy that requires undergrounding. It's very unclear to me why this didn't have that condition of approval.
Sure. I want to just interject if I may. So Commissioner Bauckey, and through the chair. So the policy is getting out, all new development and substantial redevelopment shall underground onsite service connections, so that, to prevent new power poles from going up for new development. Separate, that's a planning policy requirement. Separate from that, the building code requires undergrounding of utilities for different purposes. That's not our purview, but I do know that there are instances that poles, existing poles, have to be undergrounded for those, for building code requirements. And this in particular is for coastal visual resources, that we're not creating new utility poles.
Right. So anyway, back to, it'd be nice to have somebody from Public Works answer the question as to why they weren't.
When it does, true.
You know, where's the trigger? And, you know, sometimes it's assessed valuation. There's different ways it triggers that, and this would, it sort of jumped off the page to me, is like, okay, we've got, and they're fairly unsightly, if you, you know, all of Brian's very, very nice renderings, none of them show those power poles that you see in your initial slide five, which, you know, it's going to loom all over this building. And just from an aesthetic standpoint, I was wondering why that wasn't being considered to be addressed.
If it applies during building code, then it would be looked at during the building permit process.
I think the key thing, Chair Bauckey, I mean, Commissioner Bauckey.
Former Chair.
Is the onsite, and it's always, traditionally, it's always whatever we have to do onsite, and if there are poles that are specifically serving our property and they're onsite, they would obviously have to be removed. In this case, these are major lines, and they are terribly ugly, I agree. But there's, yeah, there's no way that we could afford to put those underground, and I don't know of any policy that requires undergrounding of utilities. Certainly, projects like St. Francis, we debated at length putting those poles underground as a condition of the project, but it would have been specific to either view issues or whatever. But, you know, that particular provision is onsite utilities.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And the other one is, is Policy 5.1-18, which is the risk of upset and hazards. And we know this neighborhood is full of all kinds of issues, and I wasn't sure how that's being addressed, what studies have been done. Are we sure that we're not going to run into anything on this particular site, since the neighborhood is littered with hazard materials? And is there, is that going to be something that's going to be addressed and reviewed with Department of Environmental Health as they get into the building permit process?
And thank you for the question, Commissioner. Can you, it's 5.1-, which, which one was it again?
18, so hazard risk.
Okay. Oh, yeah, the hazard risk reduction, yes. Okay. So minimizing risk to life and property from hydrologic flood and fire hazards. So as I mentioned, this is in a flood area. They do have to elevate the building slightly. Yeah, anything related to geologic requirements and the flood zone that they're in is going to be addressed through the building, building permit review of the project. We've already had a geologic study that's been done for the project. They already did a base flood elevation review with building and safety. So, yeah, there's been dialogue as far as that's concerned. Assuring stability and structural integrity, neither creating nor contributing significant to erosion. Yeah, these would all be.
Has there been like a phase one done at this point?
They're, in terms of geologic concerns?
No, on hazards.
Or with hazard, like hazardous waste?
Yes, on hazards, that's my.
Yeah, so there's been a number of studies that have been done for this project site. There was a 2003 phase one done, there was a 2021 phase one done, and included in the conditions of approval was continued work with environmental health with respect to the site.
Okay. Just want to make sure that was addressed, because this area is littered with problems.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's, any questions I had?
Thank you, Commissioner Bauckey. Other commissioners, any questions? Commissioner DeLucio?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Did you say the building's going to be lifted up? Is it a couple of feet, correct?
It's, it's a little less than a couple of feet above the street, current street level.
Okay. And the other thing is, you're not going to do much, I mean, you'll have to grade the soil and all that, right?
Oh, yeah, we're, I mean, it's not great soil down there, so we haven't designed the structural foundation yet, but, yeah, there will be earthwork that will, you know, we'll probably have to do geo piles or something like that for the, for the, but it will be a slab foundation.
And you'll be, you'll be sending samples, I guess, to the county, right, to look at it?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the phase one report calls for, but I'm, you know, there probably will have to be additional samples made when there's excavation.
Before you start building, you'll make sure everything's.
Clean.
Cleaned up.
Yeah. Just to add on to that, yeah, that's one of the requirements is sampling to be done. Yeah, as part of grading.
Any other questions? All right, well, with that, we'll move to Commissioner deliberations. Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like the building. I like the design. I like everything about it, insofar as its view from the freeway. I remember when the big building was going in, I think Len Vic and Minor designed that one, and nobody knew, I mean, what's it going to be like? And now I don't think anybody even sees it. You just drive right by it. You don't even notice it. And I'm sure this will be similar in that regard, but the, the glass component of it is something that I think is nice, and I hope it sets a trend to this area, which really doesn't have too much architectural definition to it, but this is, this is a very nice building. And I congratulate you and Marborg as well. So thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion when time comes.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. Next, we have Commissioner Bauckey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, kudos to the applicant team with a very well-designed project. I remember back in May of 2021, when you had another project before us, one of my anxieties, and I think I may even voted no on your project, or surely had some concerns, which is with the parking in that area. That area is very, very parking constrained, and I think it's great to show that you realize there was definitely a problem down there, and that you're willing to go that extra mile here and, and overpark. I'm not a big, you know, big advocate of overparking, much less parking per se, but in this case, it's well-needed, and thank you for, for taking it to property and overparking, which I think will help the neighborhood on an overall basis, so I give kudos for that. And to Mr. Cornell and your, your design staff, this is going to be a very nice building. Unfortunately, I think your power poles are going to be detrimental to your nice building as you sit in it and look out, or vice versa, but, but that's, you know, that's reason for my comments on that. But I'm very, very much supportive of the project, and I hope my fellow commissioners will support it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauckey. Next, we have Commissioner Leslie Wiscombe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo my fellow commissioners' comments. This is a much better project. It's much more efficient, I think. I really appreciate the additional parking. The area is severely parking challenged, so I think that's, that's really going to help. And I know it costs money to build additional parking, but I think, I think it's the right thing to do. And I appreciate the, the one entrance and exit rather than the two we had before on the last project, so I think that will help with traffic in the area. The landscape plan is lovely. That's going to be a significantly improved area. It's pretty exciting to see. It'll be a whole different look, and the architecture is lovely. It, it really is, is quite, it's quite handsome. So I certainly can support, support the project in coastal development permit and the development plan and the environmental review. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiscombe. Next, Commissioner DeLucio.
We're quiet on this one, aren't we? This is a really well-thought-out project. The sustainability of the project, the design of the project, also the improvement to the neighborhood, and it's, and you've created a campus for yourself, and the infrastructure, always love to see infrastructure improvement, and we need to keep in mind, it does not happen a lot of time until somebody's going to put a development up. So, so thank you very much for this, and I will definitely be supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio. Next, Commissioner Peterson.
I want to apologize. Can I ask a question? I know this is not the proper time.
Yes, that's okay. We were very quick on our questions today.
Thank you. What is your thought process in terms of parking for others besides your company? Whether after hours or during the day, will this just be available for your employees?
Yes, that is the intent. The, the parking lot is going to be gated at night, so it isn't used.
Okay.
So, and it's obviously for security purposes.
Thank you.
Would you like any, to make any final comments?
No. I'm, I'm support, it's a beautiful building. It looks like other quality buildings I've seen before, and it's a well-designed project. Appreciate the electric vehicle charging. Very impressive. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Any other questions or comments from other commissioners? No? Okay. I just want to say, I'm very supportive of this project. I think the building is very beautiful. I think that the landscaping is great. I think this will be an added benefit, not only obviously to this direct neighborhood, which I think could use some real revitalization, but also, obviously, you are providing a significant community public benefit for our whole community. So I'm excited to see this move forward. I do appreciate, you know, the significant parking that you have for ease for people that not only are employees, but also for folks that need to come in and pay bills and, you know, just interact with you as a utility. So thank you very much for this project. And with that, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move, excuse me, I move that the planning commission approve the recommendations in the staff report, which include a determination of exemption for the environmental review, the coastal development permit, that the project is consistent with policies of the California Coastal Act, and all city local coastal plan code, that the development plan complies with all applicable provisions in the code, consistent with principles of sound community planning, will not have a significant adverse impact upon the community's aesthetics, and is consistent with the policies of the City of Santa Barbara.
I'll second that.
May I please have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll take a vote. Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauckey?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss?
Yes.
And Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carmen.
I always cherish a unanimous vote.
So excited to be supporting Mr. Cornell's project without too much discussion, questions, and deliberations today. This action is appealable within 10 calendar days, just so the public is aware. That brings us to item five, the administrative portion of our agenda. Do we have any committee and liaison reports?
I do. Hearing Officer, report.
As do I. Am I going?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
May I ask for staff's help? In, in days gone by, often, the planning commission liaison to the ABR would give a brief but descriptive detail of what the ABR is up to, because they're kind of like our sister organization. So there have been three meetings, and I'm now the liaison to that, and I want to be sure everybody got caught up to speed. So number one, the Sears Building is going to be coming in front of the ABR on March 1st, and it's going to be a pre-application hearing, so they're going to iron out a lot of the details. The second thing, I don't know, I guess that can't be made any bigger. Let's go to the next one, after that one. They approved, at the East Side Library, they approved this really cool bench, which is part of a process that may include some other ones, and it got a resounding support from the ABR. So if it ever comes in front of us on, on these general city policies on how we can beautify the, the streets, this is an example of how it can be done. Could we see the next slide? If we can expand it, this is the, at the Y of, this is De Lavina Street, and this is the Y of De Lavina State, and over here is the coffee shop. And right here is an old 1950s, '60s motel that is going to be part of the Santa Barbara Housing Authority's supportive housing program, and it's going to be 32 studio units. If you'd go to the next one after that. Yeah, this, it's really going to be, they're going to really doll it up. It's going to have a Spanish tile roof, and this is an interior of the courtyard. This is the one that's right next to the dog park. Okay, thank you. If we could turn to another one. This is, these things were all approved by the ABR. This is at the intersection of Montecito Street and Bath Street. And right over here in the corner is the Brew House, or whatever that place is called, and then there's a car wash right here. or whatever that place is called, and then there's a car wash right here, this is the lot under, under approval, and it's going to be six duplexes with 12 units. The next page, please. And this, this is the layout of it, this is again, Montecito Street, and here's the project, kind of going like an L, this interior area there is also soon to be designed. Okay, thank you, you can skip the next one, skip that one, and go to this one. This one is really something, it's another Santa Barbara Housing Authority project, I'm, this rendering is standing at the front door of Macy's and looking towards downtown Santa Barbara, this is the driveway that you come into in Macy's, this has been a vacant lot for a long time, but it used to have a Wells Fargo building on it, and a guy sold rugs there and all sorts of stuff. This is the new project, it's going to be 46 units of affordable housing, quite a lovely design, I, I didn't go into the details here, but you'll see that going up pretty soon. And the next one, which is the one that motivated me to, to do this slideshow like we used to do in the old days, this one, I'm sure is going to get some feedback. You may know where the Lighthouse Coffee Shop is, this is Haley Street right here, and this is, I want to say Laguna Street, and the Lighthouse Coffee Shop sits right here, this is that parcel, and it's packed, and it's three stories high. The vote at the ABR was, if I remember correctly, one was absent, and two were opposed, so it carried by a vote of four, but the comments that were made, and you can see why they made it, and this goes to the discussion that we had of, of the Marburg Building, there really aren't good design guidelines for that industrial area down there, the building is beautiful, but it's really big, and you'll be surprised when it starts going up. And then you can skip past the next one to the one with the stucco white building. This, this is the corner of Nople and Cota, this is Cota Street right here, Santa Barbara Junior High School sits right here, and they're knocking down an old single-family house, and they're going to put up five apartments, and they're, best I can tell, they're going to be market-rate apartments, but it'll be a nice, it looks like it's going to be a nice design. That's it, so, but seriously, if you guys are any interested in the Sears project, March 1st is where the first public showing of what that's going to be is going to happen at the ABR. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell, that was helpful. Commissioner Wiscombe, I actually skipped over you, you were first, sorry about that.
Oh, no problem, I actually have an announcement to make, so I, should I just go ahead and make it? It's regarding, it's regarding Commissioner Sheila Lodge. There will be a, and I don't think it's on the agenda, final agenda yet, but on February, Tuesday, February 25th, at the Board of Supervisors, there's going to be a recognition of Sheila Lodge, and it will be, they do their, their recognitions, and there'll be a resolution, which I helped work on.
What's that name?
February, Tuesday, February 25th, and their meetings start at 9:00 AM, so, and it's, it's here in the city, it's not up in Santa Maria, so if, I think if anyone wants to go, I'll, I'll, once I've confirmed it with Supervisor Lee's office, he's the one that contacted me about it, once I've confirmed it with him, I will send out an email to all of you to let you know, but you might want to spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiscombe, I think that is a wonderful event, and I'm really happy to hear that's happening. I will not be in town, so I'm bummed I will miss it, but I'm glad you brought it up. Commissioner DeLucio?
I don't know how I can follow Commissioner Barnwell at this point, that was a great presentation. So, the one on, I have a question, one on Haley Street, what, what kind of architect was that, what style was that building? Can you tell? The one where the lighthouse is?
I think it's called, I'm not sure, but the architect that I talked to said it's industrial, steel and glass, modern, so put all those things together, and that's what it is, but it's, it's actually going to be living space, so.
It's going to be what?
Living space, so it's been softened by some wood themes, et cetera.
Well, I'm going to give an HLC report, nothing like you did, though, I'm sorry, but I did want to say that this Saturday, by the way, on the Sears project, you can preview it at the Lacumbra Plaza Mall between 8:00 and 12:00 noon, so if anybody wants to see a preview of, of the Sears project, I think it's going to be over, over 400 units they're proposing with an AUD, they're looking at making, through the AUD process?
That's correct, Commissioner DeLucio.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to back up, on January 29th, I'm going to give this week a report from January 29th, and then next week I'll give a report of HLC for yesterday's meeting. They did on the 29th, they did, they reviewed the draft of the adaptive reuse ordinance, which had come before us, so they took a look at that, not much to comment on, they also did, looked at an historic assessment of the Macy's site, and they determined, they accepted the Department of Parks and Recreation Historic Resource Form that stated the project is not a designated historic site or within a historic district, so that's the only action they took on that, nothing else on that project. And then I know a project at 301 East Yaninani, Yaninani, if I said correct, Street, yeah, thank you, guys, came, that came before us, I think it's, it's called, it's called The Platform, I think, is that what it's called? So, they, that went through some additional design, and it went back to the HLC, and they did a second conceptual review of it, and it's going to come before us, not a conceptual review, the actual is going to come before us shortly to, for coastal development permit, development plan, and they're asking for some setback modifications, so that'll be coming shortly, I believe, to the Planning Commission. So that's my report on HLC, no pretty pictures, sorry. And then I guess, I am now the liaison to the staff hearing officer, and I actually did view the meeting of February 5, 5th, and they had four items on the agenda for that, two were, they were all approved, two were for coastal development permits, one was at 42 Vista Del Mar, it had to do with a permit, they were building an ADU there, so they needed a coastal development permit, and then the other one was a 616 Sea Ranch Drive, they needed a coastal development permit, they were demolition of an existing residence and garage and construction of a 4,645 square foot, two-story, single-family residence, so those got approved, and then there were two other minor modifications, two, two residences needed modifications, minor modifications, and those were approved as well, so that's my report from the February 5th staff hearing officer, meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio.
I don't know if I'm glad I volunteered for that or not.
Any other announcements or discussion from the commission? No? Okay, great, well, with that, I will conclude this meeting of the February 13th Planning Commission hearing at 3:14 PM. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled, Ms. Arsenega, I don't know if you have an update on if we are still scheduled for February 20th for our next meeting?
No, we're not, we'll be canceling next week's.
Okay.
PC meeting today, and then the next hearing will be March 6th.
Okay, our next hearing will be March 6th. Thank you all, and have a wonderful rest of your day.